Welcome, everybody. I would call to order the December 6, 2021 Regular Board of Aldermen Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Here.
Alderman Tice?
Here.
Alderman Sims?
Here.
Alderman Waggy?
Here.
Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderman O'Neal?
Here.
Alderman Shelton?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'm going to gavel open the public hearing for the adoption of the budget fiscal year commencing January 1, 2022, and concluding December 31, 2022. Anybody in the public care to address that issue? Now is the time to do so. Just come down to the podium or let Kelly know if you're online.
No hands raised online.
Okay. I will gavel close the public hearing for the budget. Bring us down to item four, Approval of the Agenda. I have one request, and that is to remove item eight, "I," under the Consent Agenda, and that is Resolution 1324. And the reason for that is Brentwood is not included in the opioid settlement, as that settlement was only for cities in excess of 10,000 residents. So there's really no reason for us to weigh in on that. We're not going to get any money from that. So can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. With that, is there any objection to approving the agenda as amended by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Thank you. Next up, Citizen Comments, item five. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now's the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes. Just come down to the podium, if you would, and please state your name and address. Or if there's anybody online.
Brian Hanson. Been up here before and talked with you all, and I appreciate you guys' time again, and thank you. I just wanted to comment again about the proposed bill for the EV chargers that I see has now been revised based on the city's comments and possibly after the last meeting and how that kind of came through. I did have a couple of questions about that, how it's now been reduced in the verbiage about, for instance, new construction definition. What defines new construction? It seems pretty vague, considering the last time you actually put in there a Level III. If I decide to put a new garage behind my house, does that classify as new construction or a remodel? If I put a four-seasoner remodel on the back of my house, is that a new construction process or is that a remodel? So I'm concerned about the overreach that may not be clearly defined in this bill that may allow to be interpreted by the code or by the building officials and not be accurate to what everybody does and kind of is the common good to that. As I walked in tonight, I counted the amount of electric vehicles we had on our parking lot: zero. Okay? This is such a mutant problem or concern that it's surprising to me that we're going down this path and enforcing this onto Brentwood residents to adhere to this. Out of the whole state of Missouri, there's 2,52,788 registered vehicles. Out of those registered vehicles, 6,740 of them are registered as EVs. That's less than 1/3 of 1%. This is such a miniscule issue that it's just surprising that we're going down this path already. With changes in codes, changes in technology, we're doing this preemptively when it's such a small issue, it just doesn't seem to make any sense. To me, and to most, I would say that seeing how it's 1/3 of 1%, why is a power port in your garage going to be a selling feature to you to move into Brentwood? I think Brentwood has lots of other things to offer than a power outlet in their garage for their EV car that they don't currently own or may never own. And then my last note just kind of goes back to the whole thing of, you know, Teslas, all these nice cars that are EVs are $60,000-plus just to get into them, not to mention the maintenance, the hazardous waste to get rid of these batteries. All exceed your common standard $20,000 and $25,000 starter vehicles. New homes, we have smaller homes here in our community. People aren't budgeted to spend $60,000 and $70,000 on new vehicles, especially moving into here. So I'd just like for you to consider those things as you move forward on possibly adapting this bill.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody online, Kelly? And we do have two-
But we have two people who've sent in comments to be read.
Okay.
Okay. The first one is from Don Keeling. He says, "I'll be on an airplane at the time of the meeting, so I'm not able to join. I'm pleased to see the remodeling portion of the legislation being removed. My two cents regarding the subject matter from a person who has spent 28 years in the automotive industry covering all of North America. We can all read and most likely are aware of the statistics regarding the low percentage of registered EVs across the U.S. at the present time. I have attended three conferences in 2021 where one of the presenters and keynote speakers were consultants to the OE and aftermarket industries' focus on future market of EVs. All of them have stated that the transition to even 25% EVs is more than a few years down the road, and the politically-driven mandates regarding target dates are not realistic. The distance anxiety associated with EVs will continue to be the number-one concern for a variety of reasons. EVs are a good option in the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic regions of the U.S. and also Europe due to the condensed geographic and population density. Not so great in the majority of the U.S. that have a classic or antique car denotation, making a transition to electrical even more complicated. The average cost of an EV is in the neighborhood of $60,000, eliminating that market to a large percentage of U.S. drivers based merely on a cost analysis alone. According to the three experts, five of the top 10-selling EVs the last few years have been Tesla, not your grandpa's Oldsmobile, so to speak, based on the selling price of any Tesla model. As an aftermarket-centric person, we are big fans of government overreach by trying to legislate the free market. The reason for this is the OE's will to make countless mistakes reducing the lifecycle or wear items, parts, on an EV. Every one of the Chevy bolts produced have been recalled. This long response is merely meant to offer caution to the reality of the EV market and for folks to slow their roll, pun intended, regarding the transition to EVs from Internet combustion engines. Thank you for reading and have a lovely day." The second email is from Paul Presson. He said, "I'm not able to participate live at the meeting tonight and would like to have my comments read. I won't reiterate all of the statistics I quoted at the last meeting as to why this ordinance is completely unnecessary at this time, but I will reiterate that this ordinance is a couple of decades premature, and in my opinion, it is completely counterproductive to the Sustainability Committee's charge of conserving our resources. The fact is, we are going to require thousands of feet of additional heavy-gauge copper wire be installed in all new construction when the percentage of people who will actually use it is completely insignificant. I cannot think of a more wasteful use of those resources. Not to mention, the environmental benefit of EVs is still highly disputed when we are simply trading one fossil fuel usage, gasoline in automobiles, for another fossil fuel, coal, usage to create the electricity to charge an EV. Secondly, this feels far more like an issue that should be driven by our free-market economy, not a municipality deciding what type of vehicle I should drive. If there is a need in the market, someone will fill it. Currently, with the percentage of EVs on the road in the single digits, there is no current need. This feels like a complete overreach. Lastly, personally, I will likely never be an EV owner. With the current average cost of an EV being $60,000, I am not someone who will ever spend that on my transportation. I owe a construction company and require a pickup truck. Regardless of my ability to afford an EV, I choose to drive an 11-year-old Ford F-150 that I paid $15,000 for two years ago. I will drive this truck until it is no longer able. So if I were to build a new home in Brentwood, which is a possibility in the future for our family, I'm essentially being forced to waste $1,000 to $1,500. A primary goal of municipal government is to lock out for the best interests of its residents, oh, is to look out for the best interests of our residents. I fail to see how this ordinance in any way, shape, or form does that. Thank you for your time. Paul Presson."
Thank you. Anybody else? Any online comments?
Susan Mullen has her hand raised.
Okay. If you can unmute her, Ms. Mullen. Can you hear us?
Now I'm unmuted.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, I had a couple of questions, and I don't know if you can even answer questions at this time. I know at one other time you don't really answer questions. My concern is, who is pushing to have this ordinance done? And how did it even come about, other than trying to be, you know, future-equipped with our city? But, and second of all, I don't have any problem with putting an electrical box into my house if I'm going to be having it built, but that should be my decision. And I don't think that this is something that our cities should be mandating for new builds. If people want to do it, I pat them on the back to go ahead and do it. But I think it should be their choice and not the city's choice. And then I also want to say that I really would want to, I wish that our city would be more concerned about stuff that has to do with a majority of our citizens and not just a few people that, you know, would be benefit to this. And I just think that there's so many other issues that our city could be focusing on that would have to do with, that would be the better common ground for all of us instead of just a few select. So I just wanted to voice my opinion there and let you know that I wish and hope and pray that the panel will reevaluate their decision on this and the need for it. And I just hope that they'll listen to the public. And I know there's going to probably be a lot of people that are for it, but that's fine. But let them be responsible for doing that then and not making it a mandate for all of the community. Thank you for letting me express my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen, for taking the time to do so. And you are correct, this is not really a question-and-answer session. If after the meeting, if you want to reach out to me, you can give me a call tomorrow, call my office, or you can reach out to your alderpeople. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to answer your questions for you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate my aldermen's for letting us be aware of all of this going on, too. Thank you so much. You all are doing a great job.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No one.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on. Mayor and Alderman reports. I have just a few, oh, I'm sorry, is there somebody else?
Do you want me to read it?
I don't know. How do we, it's not a comment? I don't know that.
That's the question.
Okay. So under the Mayor and Alderman reports, I have the Mayor's report. First, a few things. Number one, after taking a year off from our holiday party, we are going to hold it next Monday from 5:00 to 7:00 at the recreation center, Community Center. There will be light hors d'oeuvres, drinks, and entertainment, and a visit by Santa. Also, the Fire Department, just to remind everybody, this Friday and Saturday is a parade by our Fire Department. They will, Friday night, I think they're doing the East Side of Brentwood, or maybe it's backwards. I'm looking at the chief. Well, it's on the webpage. You can find more information about it, but from, starting at 5:00, the Fire Department will put a parade on one side of Brentwood Boulevard. Saturday night, they will do the other side. And they will, like the Santa tracker of old, they will be, you can track them if you check out the, I don't know if it's the Twitter feed, this Facebook, and you can see where they will be, a live feed of where they are, so you can go out there and say hello to them. They are also still hosting the Toys for Tots that ends this Friday, no, Saturday, the 11th. And if you, again, this is the normal Toys for Tots, new toys, drop them off at the Fire Department up to Saturday, and then Saturday afternoon at noon, there will be a fill-the-ambulance event in the parking lot of the Drury, I believe. Come on down. You are welcome to attend that. We really do hope you can take time to go visit one of our stores in Brentwood and buy a toy, then drop it off at the Fire Department. And then we, this is the second year, I think, of the pillow fight between the Police Department and the Fire Department, and that started on December 1, ends December 31. New pillows, drop them off at either the Fire Department or the, the Police Department is a friendly competition between the two departments, and that might culminate in an actual, physical pillow fight between the two departments. I think it did last year, if I remember correctly, on Channel 2. So that's it for my report, and I'll move on to Alderman Plufka.
I have no report.
Alderwoman Tice?
No report.
Alderwoman Sims?
No report.
Alderman Waggy?
We have Public Works on Thursday at 6:00 PM. We're going to find out what the fate of the trees on White is and get an update on the stormwater master plan, how many cymbals we've had. Thank you.
Alderman Gould?
No report.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Public Safety Committee meeting will meet here, November 22nd at 5:00.
Alderman Shelton?
No report.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
No report.
Okay, moves us on to City Administrator Report. First up is the Brentwood Bound update.
Hi. Good evening. Craig Schutter with Navigate Building Solutions. Going through my typical report, the first item of expenditures is construction costs. Total spend since the last Board of Alder meeting was $1,248,090. All right. And 27 cents. Next is soft costs. $141,024 and $1.01 was spent on material testing, playground design and engineering, auditing fees, fiber optic relocation fees, and project management fees. Next is property acquisitions. $7,150 was spent on property acquisitions and commissioner fees. There were no changes in categories of funding and additional funding sources down below. So that is it.
Great. Any questions for Craig on the report? None. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Next up, under City Administrator Report, BOLA is what?
We are bringing to the attention of the Board of Aldermen the Wey investment condemnation matter. This item, the request for payment, is on the warrant list, and the Board will be voting on that before the actual item under New Business. So we just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay. Thank you. And finally?
There has been an update from, I believe, interim City Attorney Bob Jones. At the last meeting, he indicated that he had contact with Hal Goldstein, Office of the United States Attorney, and would be able to provide an update regarding the investigation. So that has been uploaded into your report. We have also heard back from the city's officials, errors and omissions, insurance provider, and they have denied the claim, so.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Plufka?
I just want to ask a question. So the November 10 letter is the most recent?
No, the November 17. So that was when we heard back from the insurance provider, and then November 16 is when, oh.
I'm sorry, I meant specifically the letter from our city attorney to the prosecutor.
Right, right.
Was it the 10th?
Yeah.
So we don't have a response from them?
Well, we have an email response that was sent to Bob-
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't-
To Bob Jones, Robert Jones.
Okay.
Bob Jones sent an email to BOLA saying that he had heard back from Hal Goldsmith.
Right.
And in the email from Jones, he simply related back to BOLA what his conversation with Hal Goldsmith, and that's at the bottom of that item. Alderman Plufka? Okay. Sorry. Thank you. That's the only question I had. Okay. Alderman Lockmiller?
Madam City Administrator, were they denying the claim because, it looks to me in this letter, they're narrowing it down to the current policy period.
Right.
Where this took place, I guess, starting in late '18 through '19.
Right. There is, he refers to an exemption in the city's policy that you must have been, you must have left the city within three years before you could file a claim, and this is only two years. So they're denying it for that reason. This is a request for payment. This is not filing a claim for having been inconvenienced or impacted, you know, in a negative way.
Thank you. Any other questions for the City Administrator? By my account, this is the fourth or fifth time that this has been on the agenda. And, you know, you all drive this, not the mayor, and at any point in time, you can take, make a motion to vote on this. I believe, to summarize, where this board stood was, first, you wanted to find out if the investigation into the former mayor had anything to do with his role as the mayor as opposed to a private individual. If the answer to that was it was a result of his role as the mayor, then you would want to make a determination as to whether or not you want to indemnify him. And the reason for the request to the U.S. Attorney's Office was to try to answer the first question. And so I don't know if you had that answer, but again, if the board wants to take up a motion at this time, Chair would certainly entertain it. Otherwise, I guess we just take a motion to table it, Mr. City Attorney. Is that the proper procedure? So we need something, either a motion to table this to the next meeting in the hopes that you get some additional information, or take a motion to take this up once and for all.
Or a motion to take action on it. It's on the floor by reason of being on the agenda.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? I'm just not, are we waiting on items from questions that haven't been answered? I mean, I think the email indicated that we won't be receiving information from the U.S. Attorney's Office. Are there, I honestly, as I sit here, can't recall. Are we-
No. Well, that's why I'm bringing this up, because I think we were trying to, we were waiting for information from the U.S. Attorney's Office. And we also, I think Alderwoman Tice had made the request or the motion to at least reach out to the insurance company to see if there's anything, well, we got an answer on the insurance. We don't have an answer from the U.S. Attorney's Office. It sounds like we're not going to get an answer from the U.S. Attorney's Office, if that answers your question.
I guess in that case, I'll make a motion to vote on the former mayor's request for payment of his attorney's fees.
It would be a motion to take action, whatever action you propose to take, pay or deny.
So if somebody wants to make a motion to grant it for the full amount, to a portion of the amount, or to deny, one of those three, I think, might be possible.
Then in that case, I guess I'll amend my motion to a motion to deny the request for payment of these attorney's fees. Need to add more words.
Okay. We've got a motion by Alderwoman Sims and second by Alderwoman O'Neal to deny the request for indemnification. Any discussion on that? Yes, Alderman Shelton?
I don't know who to ask this to. Just a quick question. If we were to get more, if we deny this and we were to get more information, is there anything that prohibits the request coming back with new information? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Alderman Gould?
Was there, I'm looking through my email, and it's not on Board Docs. Was there a recent correspondence from Chris Thornton as well?
Regarding this item?
Yeah.
No.
I thought I saw that recently.
That was a different item.
Okay.
Oh, what, okay.
Yes, you, if I may, the city has received a sunshine law request from Mr. Thornton for records he-
Is your microphone on, Kevin? I'm sorry.
No, because I'm trying not to be hurt. The city has received a sunshine law request from Mr. Thornton for records which he believes would be related to the inquiry by the U.S. Attorney's Office concerning communications in the city's email and database and records of the city pertaining to allegations involving him. That is in the process of being responded by, looking for records to be, whether they are responsive or not. But it is related to the question of whether or not, of what transpired with respect to the allegations. At least, it's a request by him for more information in that regard. So in that respect, there is that pending.
Thank you. I thought I saw that. I just wasn't sure.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Do we need a roll call on this or just voice vote?
Your call.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to deny the request for indemnification? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderman Lockmiller? I'm sorry?
Oppose.
Oppose? So, okay. So by the chair's count, we have six in voting to deny the request and two nays. Six a's, two nays, or six i's, two nays. So with that, the motion is approved to deny the request for indemnification. So that moves us on to item eight, the Consent Agenda. We have, after the amendment, a few items. Are there any requests, any questions or any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? If none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? And a motion to approve and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you. Brings us on to item 9A, Old Business. Alderman Waggy, are you wanting to make some type of a motion at this point?
Yeah. Do we need to get the reading of the second to start, or? Yeah. So I would make a motion to make two amendments to the version two that is in Board Docs. The first would be to remove the Level III modification requirement for the EV, and then to change the table for the multifamily to match St. Louis City. That was based on some feedback we got from a potential developer, and I don't know if you need me to read those changes, but those changes are encompassing in the version three, which is included in Board Docs.
Well, I think the city attorney has drafted one to that effect. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Bill number 6356.1 in the Board's agenda materials reflects the proposed amendments, which the alderman has suggested. So a motion to amend the bill by Bill 6356 by the text of Bill 6356.1 as circulated to the Board, but this agenda would be in order.
Want to make that motion? Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second to amend 6356.1 with 6356.1. Any further discussion on that? And again, this is just to amend it. This is not a vote on the bill. Okay, all in favor of making that amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Count by a vote of seven to one. So, Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6356.1 by title only, please?
Bill number 6356.1, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance amending Section 500.820 of the Brentwood City Code and the city's Energy Conservation Code to include the electric vehicle supply equipment in new dwellings.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill 6356.1 into ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Alderman Lockmiller?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the public comment hit on this, and I know Alderman Gould brought this up, but I'm trying to figure out the pathway that this originated here at the board level. And it looks like from the memos, from staff memo number November 15th, after meeting, the Sustainability Commission, after meeting with Ameren, directed staff to draft EV legislation and presented to the planning and zoning, which was done, and planning and zoning sending a negative recommendation. And my understanding is the Sustainability Commission is under the Public Works Committee. And I, nowhere along this way, this path, has this ordinance or bill been presented to the Public Works Committee to then be forwarded on to the full board. It's completely bypassed. So I guess, and then when I see this memo dated December 6th, it says that the staff was asked to provide a revised draft eliminating level three renovations. Well, who asked staff? Who, and I guess that's a question for you, Madam City Administrator, who is directing this legislation?
I listened to the conversation that the board had at the last meeting, and the public comments, as a matter of fact, this actually did go to Public Works Committee. And there was a discussion there. There was no recommendation from the committee. And based on the conversation that we heard here, I directed staff to go ahead and prepare an amendment to help facilitate an amendment should the board want to move in that direction. There is no requirement that you do so, but to help facilitate the discussion this evening, that's why we put it on there.
But there was no vote taken at the Public Works Committee on this specific legislation. There was at one meeting some discussion on EVs, but there was never anything brought before the Public Works Committee and then voted upon that body to forward on to the full board.
You're correct.
All right. But once again, is this just staff-driven? Who?
Well, you know, a lot of the items that we bring to the board tend to be staff-driven based on what we hear, whether it's a bill coming through the Senate or the House, or just what we learn from other communities, or maybe from our community. So that is the impetus for everything we bring to the board. And on occasion, some are led by the aldermen themselves.
Well, I just, I think this should have gone through the proper channels and been presented to the Public Works Committee for discussion. And my name's on this bill, and I had, I did not bring it to this body, so I would request that my name be removed from this bill. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Plufka.
Yeah, I've thought a lot about this disordinance. Whenever the city sets out to mandate something, to require people to do something within the city, in my opinion, there needs to be an overriding interest being served by the city of Brentwood, a public safety interest or some other interest. I do not see that overriding interest by the city. It certainly isn't a safety interest. And it's, and you can try to say that the world is going to be better with more electric vehicles in it than with gas-powered vehicles, but until we resolve the issue which was brought up by one of the commentators, and that is that 70% of our electricity in this state is generated by the burning of coal, I really don't see how that issue gets any traction whatsoever. It feels to me like we are too far out in front of the public on this issue. As it was pointed out, less than 1% of vehicles on the road are currently electric. There are thousands of ads, you can see them every day, about the electric vehicles that are coming down the road. And I'll be the first to admit that that's, it looks great. And if I were trying to make a decision for myself with regard to what kind of vehicle I might buy, I might be very tempted to buy an electric vehicle these days, given the options that are coming out there and all that kind of stuff. But that's my decision. It's quite a different thing for the city of Brentwood to require that if you're building a new home in the city of Brentwood, you must outfit it with this technology, which you may well never use. I don't think we should be in the business of promoting one particular industry over another. We don't know what the future of electric vehicles are in this country. We can all say that we think we know. We think we know that we're going to be, you know, fleets of electric cars in 20, 30 years from now. We just, we don't know. And I don't think that's where our ordinance ought to go, so far out in front of what still has yet to play out for us. And I understand the other side of this, and I respect the opinions on both sides of this, but I am, I'm just, I'm convinced that this is not an ordinance, even with the changes that have been offered tonight. This is an ordinance that we should be adopting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman O'Neal.
I respectfully disagree with Alderman Plufka. The tipping point for me was when Ford announced that it was making an electric truck. I had never anticipated that. If that's the sign of the future, then I think we need to be there. Whenever it comes to codes, I want Brentwood to be at the forefront. I don't want any safety items because electricians or someone are using a code that is 10 years out of date. I want us to have everything we can to protect the safety of our people. I don't think this is going to hurt the person who is buying into a new garage. It's a dwelling. And all of the infill dwellings we've seen go up in Brentwood have been things in the realm of $800,000 up. Certainly anybody who could afford that could afford an electric car. So I'd like to see this passed, simply because I think we need to be at the forefront. If the city of St. Louis is doing it, we ought to be there too.
Thank you. Alderman Gould. You got your hand up before Alderman Tice.
All right. I would say that this is one that I am fine with us not being in the forefront on, because it's a principle of let the market drive public policy, not public policy be driven by the market. I'm sorry, you know, the market being driven by public policy, that's just the wrong thing to do. And, you know, the government is not here to protect somebody from potentially making a poor business decision when they go and construct a new building. And the only comments that I've heard that seem like it's for it are, well, it's cheaper to do it at the time of construction versus retrofitting. Well, that's not something the city really should be concerned about. You know, if I develop a building, or I build a new home, and then a couple of years, or 10, 20 years from now, they decide that I have to put this infrastructure in in order to make it desirable, or my tenants want it, then fine. That's not a concern for the city. So I just, I just think that this is special interest versus, that's being driven, driving this versus public interest. And I just don't think it's, you know, we have codes that regulate electricity, and to do all of these safety codes, it's already there. We don't have to have it. This is just a regular outlet. Safety codes are already there. I'm also concerned that not only did the Public Works Committee not debate this and make amendments and work, you know, beat it up, vet it, come up with the right language, and then recommend it up, I think that we need to be, take some serious considerations for public safety as it relates to the increase of fires that happen with these vehicles. There was one just recently, last week in Pennsylvania, that almost burned a whole house down because it was plugged in and charging. The Chevy bolts are all recalled because they're exploding. The batteries are catching fire while being charged. So I think, you know, the intensity of the fires is something that I would like to see the fire department be able to weigh in on. And are we fully equipped? If we say, let's outfit everybody in town with this capability so that we can increase the purchase frequency of this type of vehicle, are we even equipped from a public safety and firefighting ability if we start seeing battery fires that are happening?
Alderman Tice?
So my first comment is, I'm a strong process person, so I definitely appreciate Alderman Lockmueller's comments about how this didn't go through the process the right way. And I definitely thank you for bringing that up and agree with that. Because it's before us now, I am in support of this. I like the new amendments that have been made. I think some of the public comments from last time have, I think, at the city administrator's direction, really took some of those comments into account. The expense on this on a new house is minuscule. I think on multifamily dwellings, having this just makes a lot of sense. And I definitely will be voting for this if it comes for a vote.
Anybody else? Alderman Shelton.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Alderman Plufka had said. You know, I've put a lot of thought into this and gone back and forth. And, you know, I champion what we're doing with sustainability and think that we should be at the forefront of a lot of things. And, you know, I think it's good to have these discussions. I think it's a good point to bring up. But for me, it just comes down to the numbers of where we're at and just that the mass isn't there yet. And I'll be the first one. In 10 years, I'll probably have an electric car, and I think we'll be having this discussion again. I just don't think we're there yet. And, you know, what concerns me about with this, and I know things are ramping up and it's coming quickly, and it'll be happening probably quicker than I realize, but I guess, you know, we just never know how the technology is going to change. What if these outlets that we're mandating be installed now have to be changed going down in the future? And then, you know, it's, oh, well, Brentwood maybe do that. At this point, now it's, the technology's changed. So I support the idea and the whole sustainability and think that we should keep pushing for that and applaud what the committee does. But I just don't think that supporting this at this time is, we're at the right time yet.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Sims?
I think it's going to be a fun night for you, Mr. Mayor. I am for this ordinance. I think it's the future. I think we should be on the forefront. I think our building permit system operationalizes all manner of policy-driven requirements for our buildings that go into our town. Our, you know, they, commercial buildings need to be ADA compliant. We need three-pronged plugs. We need smoke alarms, you know, per a certain amount of square feet. I mean, this is, I was, this is the future. And I think it's, I think it's right that we, I'm in support of being at the forefront of it. I am compelled by the amendments that went in. I think it's tempered. This is new construction on residential, you know, where I think, and I'm proud to say that new construction going in is, what, $800,000, $900,000, having some kind of readiness in your garage. We're talking about probably something that contractor would do for free, or a rounding error in terms of overall costs. We substantially scaled back what construction, or commercial or new multifamily homes would have to do in order to, you know, meet the requirements of this ordinance. You know, we got feedback from commercial developments and we listened. So I think it strikes a balance. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Waggy?
Since everybody else went, I feel left out. So I am completely in favor of this. I do appreciate the feedback that we got on the modifications. And, you know, I'm very comfortable with these amendments. Obviously, Madam, I'll give a real-world example that happened literally between the first reading and the second reading here in Ward Two. There's a new house on White that I'd been watching very closely for stormwater issues and architecture review board, and a nice new family moved in at the beginning of the school year. It's right on the way to the dog park, so I walk past there every day. And last week, I noticed they had an electrician installing an outlet in their garage. Know the family, so I was able to talk to the family. And, you know, I personally think they bought that house after it had been built, so they didn't have an opportunity to, you know, request that that be part of the new bill. I personally don't think, and the homeowner agreed that they didn't think that would change the price that they bought it. I think people are selling these houses for as much as they humanly can. He did get quotes, and it was $3,000 to run that electrical line into his garage and punch new holes. So within two months of them moving in, and they were already doing that, and I think that is, that is exactly the issue that we're at here. There are certainly challenges with EVs, a lot of them still, in terms of the overall macrocosm of these. I think they will be addressed, but I think this is the right step for the future for this town. Thank you.
Alderman Plufka?
I just, I just wanted to respond to one thing that Alderman Sims had to say. Building codes promote safety. The ADA promotes accessibility. Those are both overriding interests that the city has to deliver to its constituents. There is no overriding interest connected to this ordinance whatsoever, nothing like that at all. And I would just say to you, for the folks that are so certain that this is the way things are going to go, I would just have one word for you. Betamax.
Thank you. Yeah, pretty soon, we're going to have a bunch of horseless carriages driving around the roads if we're not careful, you know?
Or hydrogen cars, or fusion cars of some sort. I mean... I just simply want to respond to the suggestions about the process. You know, I'm sure the board understands, nothing has to go to committees. Now, you should know that, Alderman Lockmueller. You've been doing this long enough that it does not have to go to a committee.
No, it doesn't. It's just a courtesy.
Excuse me. I still have the floor. And staff has the ability to take something directly to the board and bypass the committees. And that's what happened here. It's plain and simple. If something that needs to get vetted in front of a committee, i.e. the budget, that makes perfect sense to go to a committee. Something may be time-sensitive. We don't have time for it to go to a committee. Might want to avoid the committee because we think it might get shut down at a committee level. If staff feels strongly about something, they can bring it directly to the board. And nobody is short-changed. There's a vetting. That's what tonight is. The same discussion that could happen in front of Public Works is happening tonight. The difference is that it involves eight people instead of three or four people. So some suggestion that something wasn't followed and that wasn't appropriate is not true. It's plain and simple. We can do this. We've done it before, and the mayor has the prerogative, sitting in this chair, to bring anything to this board. If the board doesn't like it, the board by majority can take it off the agenda. That's the process, if you want to talk process. That's it. Okay, yeah.
No, you're right. I completely agree. You can bring anything you want forward. But the ordinance that created the Sustainability Commission says it would make, recommend, it will recommend policies to the Public Works Committee of the board. This policy did not follow that path. And it's in the ordinance that created the commission. So that's why I'm saying that it did not follow proper procedure.
And you can have that opinion, and I will challenge you on the use of the term "proper procedure." Anybody else? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
No.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
No.
Alderman Lockmueller?
No.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Shelton? Vote is for yes, for yea, for nay?
And the mayor votes yes. Okay.
So the vote is five to four in favor of the bill. Ordinance, it will become ordinance number 4994.
Thank you. Move on to new business. First item is Bill number 6361, the budget. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read of Bill 6361 by title only, please?
Bill number 6361, first reading, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Brentwood, Missouri for the calendar year 2022 and providing for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Bola, are you presenting on this?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I am happy to present to you the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. I want to thank the Ways and Means Committee for the multiple meetings, I've lost count now, that we had. And I want to thank Robin Jones, the Finance Director, and all our department directors for all the work that they've been doing since August, practically all year, because you all knew what you were going to be presenting in the proposed budget. We also had Citizens Budget Forum. Unfortunately, we had no residents in attendance, but we relied on the information that they had shared with their aldermen throughout the year. The budget before you is balanced, and, you know, the city, we're still trying to figure our way out through COVID. And, you know, this poses a challenge for the city, because even though the city is in a great place, the city has lost revenue since 2020. So whether it's General Fund, whether it's Stormwater and Parks Improvement Fund, Capital Fund, and even Sewer Lateral, and Sewer Lateral much more so because the board changed the policy in how the program, the Sewer Lateral Improvement Program is being funded. So what is impactful regarding the budget before you this evening is, is not that our sales tax is doing bad. It's doing great. The city residents also, in the last year or so, approved the Economic Development Sales Tax, the half-cent sales tax. They also approved the Use Tax. And this year was the first year for the Use Tax. And we were very conservative in what we projected for the revenue. I believe it was $295,000. Unbeknownst to us, our residents were going to really be ordering a lot of stuff online. So please continue to do that if you hear me. We're very grateful for that. So this year, we are estimating to collect $374,000, and then next year, we're projecting $377,000. Also, the Economic Development Sales Tax last year during COVID was the first year that the city began to collect it. And what we had to do is before the Missouri Department of Revenue was sending out notices, instead, the city had to send out the notices. And we've had to send that multiple times. As a matter of fact, we've sent it out again this year, just to make sure that all those who should be collecting it are aware that the city has the Economic Development Sales Tax. So the first year, last year, we collected 2.9. We budgeted about 3.2. And then this year, we budgeted 3.3. We believe we're going to collect 3.3. And then next year. So it continues to grow up. And I believe that PGAV, when they did the initial forecasting back in 2017 or so, they were projecting that maybe 3% growth. We're not quite there yet, but I think things are getting better. So in the third year, 2022, 3.4. But because we're able to service the 2019 certified participation debt, the city is also beginning to have a robust fund balance in the Economic Development Sales Tax. So we're projecting at least $800,000 each year. And by the fifth year, if everything goes according to plan, the city should have about $5.4 million in there. So one of the questions that was asked of me as we presented all this information to the Ways and Means Committee is, what can the city spend that $800,000 for? So I asked Mark Grimm, the city's bond counsel, and he says that if the board chooses, oh, that's it. Proposition B authorizes the use of the tax for economic development purposes, including flood mitigation, transportation improvements, pedestrian greenway, and economic revitalization. Both the language and the authorizing statute, 67.1305, are fairly broad. And so if the board needs more guidance on how that money can be spent, he defers to our esteemed city attorney to help us. So I'll, I'll, I'll continue. You know, back when the board was considering the Brentwood Bound Project, in the official document for the 2018 COPs, the city was aware that we had been spending a little over a million each year as a transfer from the General Fund to the Capitals, so that the city could complete all the streets. We wanted all our streets to be in tip-top condition. Almost 30 years ago, the city took out a general obligation debt to improve 2025 streets. But finally, some of our TIFs started to pay off, the Promenade, the Square, the Point. So we had more revenue coming into the city, and the city adopted a fund balance policy of 15%. Those TIFs paid off early. All of a sudden, we're, we're getting closer. We're exceeding the 15%. We're now at 35%. So the board increased that fund balance policy. And in 2020, it was at 45%. So we were inching closer to 50. But the understanding was that once we start the Brentwood Bound Project, the General Fund, funds that are not allocated, all the capital improvement funds, not including the ones that we need to use to service existing debt and stormwater, will go toward paying the 2018 debt. So what you will see in the budget document before you is an adoption of that policy. We have scaled back considerably the number of capital improvements in the 2022 proposed budget. We are doing the same, if you look at the five-year capital improvement plan. We are proposing to do the same in 2023, 2024. The good news is, in 2024, some of our debt will be paid off. For instance, the community, community center, approximately $500,000 that the city will now have that can be repurposed and used for capital improvement. We also have an additional $200,000 that, in addition, that the city can repurpose and use for other capital improvements. You know, what we have done over the last few years in order for more departments to be able to put items in the five-year capital improvement plan and have them funded is we've straddled two fiscal years. So for instance, when we were doing the renovation of this building, we budgeted some in, in one year, we budgeted the balance in the other year. Another thing we've done is instead of financing over three years, we've extended that for a longer period of time, just to make sure, just to make sure that all the priority projects, and every project is a priority. We never bring a good-to-have, a nice-to-have item before the board. So I think that the budget is a plan. I know that the budget is a plan, and that if there is direction from the board that we take a look at reprioritization during the year, or we look for savings, you would remember this year, we've brought at least two or three savings before the board so that we can fund other projects, the Knox Box. I can't remember exactly what we funded in Parks, Parks and Recreation Department, but there is a chance to make modifications to the budget. So I don't want you to think that this is set in stone. I think in January, we'll continue to revisit what's, what's in this budget. Particularly, I want to go through some of the items that we've scaled back so that you know. For instance, there had been a request for four police vehicles. In this budget, there's three. We're still going to be doing some concrete streets in Handley Industrial and Parkside. Is it Parkside? Yeah. And so in the following years, we'll ramp up and try to do some of the other streets. We've had to defer the roof here in City Hall, but Dan assures me that there's going to be an opportunity with savings. So we, we will be bringing some of those back to the Public Works Committee for discussion. So in conclusion, we have a balanced budget, and the, the city continues to react to COVID and how it impacts us. But, you know, we're thankful for the CARES Act. The city has received two payments from St. Louis County. We've also received one payment from the American Rescue Plan Act, and that is being modeled into this budget as revenue in General Fund that will be used throughout the city for ongoing services and debt service payment in particular. So questions?
And, and just so, maybe the people who are watching this will remember the CARES Act, the city received, what, a little over half a million dollars?
Right.
And on the, what was the other one?
The American Rescue Plan, we've received about $803,000.
Out of?
Out of 1.7.
1.7. Okay. Thank you. Alderman Plufka.
Thank you. As one of two of the longest-serving aldermen, Mr. Lockmiller and myself, I, I want to just echo what, what Bola said, and I want to thank her, and I want to thank our Ways and Means Committee. When I first started as an alderman, the budget process was far less well-run than it is right now. And I don't mean well-run. I meant it, the, the process itself was rocky. It is, it is, is a testament to the work that was done on the committee level and the way that you engaged as many people as you did and, and talked to departments individually and put all that time and effort. And I can say this because I had nothing to do with any of it. I think that you guys did a tremendous job, and I really, I really mean that. I did this process of putting together the budget in all of my years serving now, since I'm seven or eight or maybe even nine now. This is, and it's not just this year, but last year as well, but it is, it is, the process has been refined, and I think you've, you did just a tremendous job this year. I do have, I have two questions. I was one of the people that asked that question about the, about the money that's not being used to retire the debt but is collected, can it be used for other things? My related question is this. We have a lot of money that has yet to be spent by Brentwood Bound but was gathered through the issuance of bonds or the CUPs. And the arbitrage group that invests that money has shown that they've invested it very well, to the tune of over $1 million in additional income from those investments. Is that income from investment treated any differently than the money that was originally received as a result of the issuance of the bonds? In other words, are there less strings attached on that investment income than there are on the original bond money, or is it all considered to be part of the same restriction?
So we asked Mark Grimm for an opinion on that, and he says the 2018 interest must be spent on the Manchester Renewal Project.
Okay.
But the 2019 interest can be spent on any capital improvement.
Oh, really? Whether it's geographically located there or anywhere else in the city?
Right.
Okay. So my other question is, also, your, your point about how our budget is slightly narrowed this year and perhaps next, but that in 2023, if I'm, I'm not mistaken, I don't think, 2024, when both the Meridian and the Handley Station TIFs mature?
Early, early retirement. That's the expectation. Right.
Right. And that'll, that'll increase our, our revenue by about $1 million or better.
Significantly. Right.
Right. Okay. And that's on, on its way, no matter what, by ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing that I was chair of Ways and Means during those three years, that Alderman Plufka described the, the budget process as a disaster.
I don't want to point any fingers.
I'll try not to take offense to that. But no, I, I, you know, let's, let's heap a little more praise on, on Ways and Means in general, the chair in particular.
Yes.
You know, when, when I became mayor, Alderman Shelton and I talked about this today. What I try to do is, is put people on Ways and Means, aldermen on Ways and Means, new aldermen, because I think it's not trying to diminish the work that the other committees do. I do think Ways and Means has one of the toughest and most important job there, there is, and that is every year to deal with the budget. I think that it's the most important thing that the board is tasked with annually. And I, I agree, this is, it's, it goes smoothly. It has gone smoothly ever since Alderman Sims became chair of, of Ways and Means. That's a testament not just to, to her work and the committee's work, but also to the department heads. We all have wants, we have needs, but what I, what I love about the, the folks that work in this city is that they're all team players, and they understand, you know, they have to compromise. You can't get everything that you need in, in every single year, and so you're willing to give something up, you try to prioritize. So I, I too want to, to thank the, the committee for the hard work. I talked to a lot of mayors, and there are a lot of cities that are not in the position that we're in. You know, don't take it for granted when our city administrator says we have a balanced budget. We have a balanced budget without having to dip into reserves. There are a lot of municipalities that aren't in that same position. So, and that's, there are a lot of reasons for that. You know, city administrators staying on top of the expenses, your ability and, and your willingness to take a risk, you know, to go with the Use Tax. That was not a popular thing to do in COVID. But you, you saw that, that would be something that would benefit the city long-term, and you made that, that courageous vote to put that on the ballot, and then the residents supported it. You know, and now we're seeing that. Like Bola said, we thought it was going to be $295,000. We're actually expecting $370,000, and that's, that figure's only going to continue to grow. So thank you again for everybody for your hard work. Any other questions after Alderman Plufka? I know you, you did a lot of work at the Ways and Means. I wouldn't be surprised if there, I guess this is more for the people who weren't on Ways and Means if, yeah.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to echo the thanks and the appreciation for all the hard work that, both by staff, the department heads, the committee who continuously came ready to, to hold the feet to the fire of the department heads when they were submitting their proposed budgets. They were continuously well-prepared. They had good questions. I also appreciate the aldermen who weren't on the committee and took the time to attend the meetings, and in particular, Alderman Lockmiller, you were, it seemed like you were there just as much as I was. And so I, I appreciate that. That's a lot of, I know, I seldom attend Public Works because I know you're in good hands. So I, you know, so I, I just wanted to thank the committee and thank, and to thank Bola. A lot of, a lot of meetings, a lot of backwork went into presenting this budget. So thank you very much.
Alderman Tice, did you say you had a bunch of questions or not? I'm sorry.
Oh, if the Ways and Means Committee heard me ask another question, they might wring my neck. So I will not ask any questions here because I've spent months asking questions.
All right. Anybody else have any questions on, on this? If not, we will kick this over to the next meeting, at which point, we will take a formal vote on the adoption of the 2022 budget. That brings us to item 10B, Bill Number 6362. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6362, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Brentwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor and our city administrator to execute the attached 2021 Community Development Block Grant Municipal Housing and Community Development Supplemental Cooperation Agreement.
All right. And Bola, are you taking this one?
The city of Brentwood, thank you, Mayor. The city of Brentwood, through St. Louis County, participates in the Community Development Block Grant Program. And as part of this program, the city is elected to utilize the funds as part of the home improvement program. The program offers forgivable loans of up to $5,000 annually to income-eligible participant. With the approval of this bill, there is a supplemental agreement that will also be signed upon approval by the Board of Aldermen.
Okay. And this is, this is something we've been doing for years.
Yes.
And are we trying to do a, trying to see if we want a second? We do want to, we want to perfect this tonight, right?
Right.
I make the motion that we have a second reading on this wonderful bill.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, please.
Bill Number 6362, second reading, in consideration for adoption. An ordinance of the city of Brentwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor and our city administrator to execute the attached 2021 Community Development Block Grant Municipal Housing and Community Development Supplemental Cooperation Agreement.
Your Honor, make a motion that we perfect Bill 6362 into ordinance form.
Second.
We've got a motion to perfect and seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Who made the second?
Alderman Gould. I'm sorry. Okay. No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderman Tice.
Yes.
Alderman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Waggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal.
Yes.
Alderman Shelton.
Yes.
Vote is eight yea and zero nay. Members of it have voted in favor of the bill, and the bill will become ordinance number 4995.
Great, thank you. It brings us on to Bill Number 6363. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6363, first reading, an ordinance approving maintenance agreements with the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District for sewer facilities for the Brentwood Bound Improvements Project.
Thank you. Dan, are you taking this one?
Think this might be a record, since I keep bringing these to you, seems like every single meeting. So there's just three of these. It's just like we've done before. These are for maintenance agreements with MSD for the Brentwood Bound Project. The three addresses are listed there, 2735 Bonpart, 2780 Mary, and 2761 Mary. So same thing, maintenance agreements, and we just need approval so that we can give them to MSD.
Alderman Plufka. Your Honor, I would ask that we have a second reading of this bill? I make that motion. Okay.
Second.
We've got a motion by Alderman Plufka, seconded by Alderman Tice. Any discussion on the motion for a second read? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-three sixty-three, second reading, in consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving maintenance agreements with Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District for sewer facilities for the Brentwood Bound Improvements Project.
Chair, would entertain a motion to perfect?
Your Honor, I make the motion that bill sixty-three sixty-three be perfected into ordinance form.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Plufka, seconded by Alderman Waggy. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Vote is eight yea, zero nay. Members of it have voted in favor of bill sixty-three sixty-three, and it'll become ordinance number four nine nine six.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a first read of bill sixty-three sixty-four by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-three sixty-four, first reading, an ordinance approving an agreement for water facility relocations for the Brentwood Bound Improvement Project.
Thank you. Dan, are you presenting on this one?
That is correct. This is, Missouri American Water has its facilities on the Breckenridge Industrial Bridge, which is in conflict with the proposed bridge. If you look at your packet, there is a relocation drawing that shows the rough route. So it's basically even or just north of the drive-up window by Popeyes, going from north to south. Goes, it's really deep, so that's part of the reason why it's expensive, so I'm sure a lot of you had sticker shock when you saw the cost. It's forty feet deep minimum to get underneath the MSD sewer, which would be perpendicular to the water main. The water main is around seven hundred twenty-five feet, it's an eight-inch HDPE pipe, which is high-density polyethylene. So not only is it going to be deep, but each piece is fusion welded to the next piece, and then it's snaked through the bore, and that bore is really deep to get underneath the conflict. So the total price is a little over five hundred thousand dollars. Brentwood share is the forty-five percent. The reason why there is a percentage that we owe is because Missouri Americans' facilities are currently in an easement. Otherwise, if they were in just public rights-of-way, it would be a hundred percent their cost. So I've spoken with Craig at Navigate, this would come out of contingency, and we do have enough contingency to cover the two hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, which is the forty-five percent Brentwood share.
Thank you. We would like to get a, yes, Alderman Plufka.
I do have a question about this, and I'm sorry Craig left. But can you, I do not understand the logic of what you just said, and I read it and I saw it. So, because we enjoy an easement on part of this property, we're invited to share in the cost of the replacement?
On the southern side is an easement that the current water main is in. The current water main, I believe, is a six-inch cast iron pipe, so they're protected. It'd be no different than if there were an easement out here on Brentwood Boulevard, and then the county were to widen it, they would be protected.
But what's our easement purpose on that south side?
If I may?
Okay.
A utility that's operating within the city in our rights-of-way are required to bear their own relocation costs for a public improvement. This feature, what we're relocating, is located in their own easement, not operating in that location by reason of our right-of-way.
Got it. I misunderstood whose easement it was. Thank you. I understand now. Thank you. Are you going to make a, would you like to make a motion for a second read?
I would. I'd like to make a motion for a second read.
Okay, thank you. And did we get a second on that?
No, you did.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor for a second read, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of bill sixty-three sixty-four by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-three sixty-four, second reading, in consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving an agreement for water facility relocations for the Brentwood Bound Improvement Project.
Thank you. Chair, would entertain a motion to perfect sixty-three sixty-four in ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to perfect, seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Vote is eight yea and zero nay in favor of bill sixty-three sixty-four, which will become ordinance number four nine nine seven.
Thank you. Last thing, under new business, is the liquor license approval for naked spirits. Is this, is our excise commissioner handling this, or is?
I can handle it for her unless you want to do it.
I reviewed it, it looks fine.
Okay, great.
Want to make a recommendation? So do we just need a?
I mean, I make a motion to approve it, if that's what you're looking for.
That's it.
So.
So you made that motion?
I make that motion.
To approve the liquor license application for naked spirits.
As Deputy Excise Commissioner, I signed that.
Yes, Alderman Plufka.
So paragraph P, who drafted that?
Drafted what?
Paragraph P. Right, handwritten. It says, tasting liquor license, any person possessing the qualifications and meeting the requirements of this chapter who is licensed to sell, all that. Do you know how that came about?
Robin, can you speak to that?
I found that in the state of Missouri website, that's a tasting license.
Okay.
And this business is one of the first in the city of Brentwood to actually do that, and it isn't part of our outdated application, which I'm working on updating.
Okay. And that's kind of why I asked, because it does, it tracks that language exactly.
Yes.
So the word that's W-I-N, it looks like a D, that's actually wine, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Wine malt beverage, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. That's the questions I had.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we had a motion and seconded by the, by the, whatever he is, the Deputy Excise Commissioner over there. See, no further discussion. I guess roll call.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?